Good evening and welcome to the Newman City Council Regular Meeting, March 25th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call? Councilmember Pimentel?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Here.
Councilmember Harden?
Here.
Mayor Graham? Need to add variations of conflict tonight? No? Ceremonial matters? There's none? Items from the public, not agenda? Anyway, anyone wishing to go up to the podium and bring up any concerns, please go up there and state your name and address and...
How's it going, everybody? Thank you, Mayor Graham, and to all the city council members for letting me have this opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Campos. I live on 435 Cinnamon Lane here in Newman, California. I stand before you today not as a longtime resident from this incredible town, but as a father, a partner, and a passionate advocate for our youth. So, I want to be transparent with the city of Newman and all the recent parents and kids I've talked to in the last two months. You see, a couple of months ago, I took my children to the park and I played a game of tag with them, which enticed other kids to want to play as well. It was at that moment that sparked an idea in me, and after praying about it, God has put it in my heart to do something more for the youth in our community. Throughout the week, but mainly on the weekends, I've been inviting parents to bring their children to the park to have a community playdate. Just parents and kids getting together to have a good time. I take equipment, toys, and games as do the other parents, and we share for all the kids to play with. I play games such as red light, green light, potato sack racing, dodgeball, tug of war, and so much more. I have chalk, bubbles, and stomp rockets for all the little ones. I play oldies in the background, and we all enjoy just a good day. What began as a simple game of tag quickly transformed into something far greater. It started with about seven kids, including my own, and now average anywhere between 40 to 60 kids, along with their parents. During this time, I've witnessed firsthand the magic that unfolds when our children and parents come together. Homeschool kids are finding friends. Public school kids are finding something different. Children who have been bullied are finding comfort, and youth with special needs or disabilities are finally feeling accepted. With that being said, I've been talking to many who are involved in our community and researching myself about taking the next steps forward into becoming a nonprofit. The name of this nonprofit is not for sure yet, but right now it's called the Campos Busy Bee Youth Foundation, which would be dedicated to providing free to little cost activities and programs in our community, from outdoor indoor play, arts and crafts, performing arts, and sports. Just real quick, why Busy Bee? Just as bees pollinate flowers, nurturing growth and beauty in our world, the children bring joy, curiosity, and the promise of a brighter future. They are the vibrant buzz that reminds us of the sweetness of life. With that, I just want to say thank you to all those who have talked to me about getting the ball rolling on this. Ally from the Rec Department, Zachary, and from the Gustine Traveling Library, Brett Powers from Powers Productions supporting me on this, Matt for encouraging me to speak, and kind of with that, open to any questions if you have any.
I've witnessed, I've seen it, so thank you. It looks good. I've watched some of the people play. I'm involved with some of the youth sports around here as well.
Thank you.
So it's good to see other people stepping up, kids that are not fortunate enough to play on teams. So it helps people getting out on the weekends because there is a lot of people just sitting around, not outside anymore. So it was good to see. Thank you.
It's definitely getting the kids off the technology.
Yeah, I agree.
Being a homeschool dad and trying to give my wife a break, I'm taking them out every day. So I'm always inviting parents out there, but like Ally and I spoke, it's for the safety and making sure that the kids' protection is number one. That's why I want to become a nonprofit, to get the insurance, to get the liabilities. And another reason is to have the bathrooms open at that time, because that would be nice. So, but yeah.
Right now, are you only staying at Sherman? Are you going to all the parks?
Yeah, no, it's just Sherman Park. Yeah, I just invite parents out. We have a good time. I teach dance here in Newman. I've always been involved with kids. I'm less nervous speaking to them, but yeah, like I envisioned something greater. So there's another program kind of like this, Far Far Away, but what they do is they go to schools during recess, and they have organized games, and the staff right there basically encourage everybody to play, to make everyone feel inclusive, to really stop bullying at a young age, and just growing from that.
I appreciate it. I appreciate everything you do. I know my daughter's been out there a handful of times, so...
Yeah, she's had a lot of fun.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Quite an endeavor, so.
Thank you. It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
But yeah, the main thing is I just wanted to make sure that I'm transparent with you guys, that I'm not doing anything wrong. I'm trying to go through all the right steps, getting insurance liability, preferably if I could get an enclosed location later down the road to keep the kids even safer. That'd be the goal. So.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else looking? Sure.
Thank you.
Good color. Thank you.
My name is Grace Scholstadt. I live at 1029 Q Street. Thank you for your time today. I am here to respectfully request a revision to our current noise ordinance to align with the clear and measurable standards set by Fresno County. Specifically, I ask that our ordinance define noise violations with enforceable decimal limits rather than relying on subjective interpretation. Currently, the enforcement of noise complaints in Newman has lacked consistency. Residents reporting disturbances have been told that they must sign a citizen's arrest form for action to be taken. However, upon reviewing the city's noise ordinance, there's no mention of this requirement. This creates confusion for the residents and places an undue burden on individuals simply seeking peace and quiet in their homes. Additionally, the language of our existing ordinance is highly subjective, leaving enforcement to personal opinion rather than objective standards. On multiple occasions, we've been informed that the reported noise was not that bad. While this may be a well-intended assessment, it doesn't provide a reliable framework for the enforcement. What one person considers reasonable may be disruptive to another, and without the clear guidelines, the ordinance fails to serve its purpose effectively. By adopting the Fresno County standard, which sets specific decimal limits, we could remove the ambiguity and ensure fairness in enforcement. A measurable standard will provide both residents and law enforcement with a clear understanding of what constitutes a violation, ultimately reducing conflicts and improving our quality of life. I appreciate your consideration of this request and look forward to working together to create a more effective and enforceable noise ordinance. I've brought along a copy of our current noise ordinance, which when calling in the past, we've been informed that they were not aware of one, so I wanted to include it. I have the Fresno County ordinance and then two articles that just kind of outline some of the major takeaways. The blue tab marks the Fresno noise measurement criteria. The orange tab is the exterior noise standards by decibel level according to time of day, and the green tab marks the enforcement criteria. So I just wanted to come and ask what we could do to change that and provide with information, kind of do the legwork, so it's there in front of us.
Thank you. Michael, is that something we can review?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll go ahead and take a look at this. We have some stuff in our general plan as well, and then I'll work with Sergeant Williams and Lieutenant Short to analyze this. Grace, does Sergeant Williams have your number?
I doubt it.
Okay. Before you leave, will you just give her your phone number and your name, and then she'll be your point of contact?
Okay.
And we'll get into this, and then we'll reach out to you in a little bit.
Okay. And the idea of how long before something would come back to me, as far as what to do next? Like a time?
Yeah, we have to look. I would say, you know, hopefully by the end of next week, we can at least reach out to you.
Okay.
And say, okay, we've been able to look at this and give you some, I don't know if it'll be definitive at that time, but we'll reach out to you by the end of next week.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Michael, when's the last time this was looked at or written? Is it the '07?
2007, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Comments or statements? Nobody from school? No, you want to talk? Yeah? Welcome.
How close? Like this close?
Yeah, you're good. Name and then address.
Lane Rodriguez, 723 Hammer Hill Drive. So I was thinking, like, as a community, we should have, like, picnics. Everybody brings, like, cake, or like muffins and stuff, to like connect everyone, and you get to try, like, your friend's mom's food.
Community picnics?
Yeah.
Maybe you should get with the other gentleman that has a play on the weekend and set that up together, partner up.
Yeah, Mayor, you know what? If Lane wants, he can talk to Ally, maybe do that at a movie night?
Yeah, or a movie night.
And then have that a combo. So that might be something we can discuss with Ally from the teen center. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I think, you know, I've watched this community for the last 13 years that I've been here, and the movie night is one great one where you see the advertisement, you see the families get out there. I love what Michael's doing. He's bringing the community, the community's involved, they're engaged, they're bringing it and building it together with him. And so I love seeing that type of effort coming from the town, and it's coming organically. It's not because we had a loss of an officer where we come together in a community center. That was a beautiful thing, but it was on a negative note in a sense of why we got together. This is all positive, and I love seeing this in the community. I want to see more of it. So I think that's a great idea. Anything is a great idea. So if you have more like that, I'd love to see you guys partner with Ally. Ally's a great resource for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on. Item number eight, consent calendar. A, waive all reins of ordinance and resolution except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the February 25th, 2025 meeting.
Move we adopt the consent calendar?
At first. We have a first and a second. Go and vote. Motion carries five zero. Item number nine, public hearings. A, adopt a resolution, 2025, next number, declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number 281 mistletoe abatement.
Good evening. We're here under the ordinance number 281 for mistletoe abatement. I've placed an updated exhibit list of addresses on each of your computer, and initially, we had 28 properties with mistletoe surveyed in town on January 31st. And so, for those that don't know what mistletoe is, it's a parasitic evergreen, it's a evergreen parasitic growth on trees, and it can lead to damaging trees and can be spread by birds. And so annually, we do a survey of both city trees and public trees, and a list is generated, a letter is sent out, which is included in the packet, initial letter saying, you have mistletoe, please take care of it. The follow-up on March 7th, between January 31st and the March 7th date, we reduced that down to 14 properties, and a final letter went out noticing them that it will be, we will come and remove that mistletoe at cost and charge it to the property owner. And since that letter, we are now, as of this afternoon, today, 11 addresses, and we expect that after this hearing, there will be additional abatement of this mistletoe, and then we will then have our contractor come out and remove it and then build a resonant. We've taken two quotes from local tree landscaping businesses that we use for other work in town, and they go take a look at the trees, give a per address cost, and then with that list, we send out directed letters to the properties with those costs. And I'm here to answer any questions about that.
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed that the cost is different. Is that how much of it is in the trees?
It's various factors, but one of it is the amount that has to be removed and the complexity of the removal. So, for example, zoomed in, this is a zoomed in photo of a tree, and this is quite high up. We try to take the picture so we don't put any in anybody's houses, you know, in the picture, but this is, would be a complex removal based on the height. And so the slight differences in those prices, that's factored into that.
Okay, thank you.
And if there's any...
I'll open up the public for any questions or comments. I'll bring it back to council for action.
Move to approve, move to adopt Resolution Number 2025, declaring the existence of a public nuisance under ordinance number 281 mistletoe abatement.
I'll second that.
For a second, go and vote electronically. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, A, report on downtown market events at the Downtown Plaza. Ally?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city. I'm just to report here on our downtown market. We will be having a market this June from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the 1300 block of Main Street and in the plaza area. The Chamber and the city of Newman are teaming up. Our market times will actually be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., but we're requesting an hour earlier and an hour after for cleanup and setup. We are asking to waive the downtown standards. We're asking for the cleanup deposit to be waived, insurance reduction to 1 million, current one state's 3 million, traffic control devices will use city-owned devices, and the restroom and electrical fees to be waived as well. All other downtown standards will apply. Staff recommends that the city council approve this event. Behind that, there's a map attached of what future downtown market will look like for this 2025 junior. With that, I can answer any questions that y'all may have.
From the public? Then I'll bring you back to council for action.
She had her hand up.
Young lady right here had her.
You gotta go up there, though.
Do you have a date?
Oh, that's fine. She's fine. She's just the dates.
So the dates of the downtown market will always be for the month of June on Friday evenings between 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's a great question.
One other question for the market, for the vendors that are in the market. Is there a standard fee for those vendors, and is that any line of sight of increasing in the future with the way that things are going?
We don't want to be a burden to our community, as most businesses are, our local downtown businesses or community members in the community. For the most part, the craft and vendor fees stay pretty low. Last year, I believe they were 35, 25 to 35 on crafts, and for food vendors, that has to go through county. So to cover fees, it's roughly about $45 to $50 per vendor. We try to keep it just minimal to cover the base for the county.
Do they require insurance as well for those vendors similar to the Fall Festival?
The Chamber actually ensures all of the downtown event. So that is actually an intake that they take over.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? I'll bring you back to council for action.
Move to accept the report on the downtown market events at the downtown, yes, at the downtown plaza.
I'll second.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. And item B, a report on Tunnel to Towers 5K Run Walk.
I will be taking this report on as well. It's the 5K Run and Walk in Tunnel to Towers. It's a foundation that has helped many officers, fallen officers in our past. Every year subsequently from our fallen officer, they've been doing this run. The police department plans to do this run similar to last year's, taking place in our downtown area, starting at the police station and ending at the plaza. They are requesting exclusive use of the downtown plaza on Saturday, August 30th, from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. I mean, 11:00 a.m. It will be a morning race. There will be a DJ and amplified music at the location. No alcohol will be sold at the event. This event will run in conjunction with the Fall Festival, and the Fall Festival will continue throughout the day as usual. The event organizer has made the following requests: exclusive use of the downtown plaza. They've asked to waive the standards for downtown events, just like the farmer's market cleanup deposit. The event organizer assures that the staff will clean thoroughly. Insurance reduction to 1 million, current standards say 3 million. Traffic control devices will be supplied with city-owned barricades, and restroom and electrical fees be waived. Staff recommends the city council approve the event as presented. The back portion also states a map where there will be a patrol rover and/or STEMBA staff, as well as volunteers guiding the race just like last year. With that, I can answer any questions that y'all may have.
Any questions from council?
No.
Any questions from the public? All right, saying that, I'll bring it back to council for action.
A move we approve 10B, the Tunnel Towers 5K Run Walk.
Second. First and second, go and vote. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Item number C, adopt resolution 2025, next number, resolution accepting wastewater treatment and reclamation facility, WWTRF, McPike 1 Reclamation Improvements Project as complete, authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of completion with Stanislaus County and authorizing the city manager to make the final payments of retention funds to Steve P. Rados Incorporated.
All right, good evening again. So a little background on this, our wastewater treatment facility and reclamation and treatment facility, we've been working on a project called McPike 1 Reclamation Improvements Project, and the major work consisted of installing an irrigation pump system that would take the treated wastewater and distribute it out to an additional set of fields for land application of that treated wastewater. This pump would work in conjunction, this irrigation station would work in conjunction with other well water out there, and the treated water blended together and will be discharged out to farm fields, primarily alfalfa, dependent on the season and dependent on the needs of planting out there. This project consisted of the pump station along with distribution pipes, approximately be about 3,800 feet of distribution piping, and a fourth main. Additionally, there were irrigation, 33 irrigation valves and head walls that tie into the existing irrigation well. This project was advertised back in 2022 in November and December, and the bids were open in January of 2023. The project is, staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution accepting that this project is complete, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Any questions from the public? I'll bring it back to council for action.
Okay, move to adopt Resolution Number 2025, a resolution accepting the water waste, water, wastewater treatment and reclamation. You guys owe me for this one. Wastewater Treatment and Reclamation Facility, McPike 1 Reclamation Improvements Project as complete, authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of completion with Stanislaus County and authorizing the city manager to make final payment of retention funds to Steve P. Rados Incorporated.
Good job.
Yeah. I did have pictures included, and I apologize.
Too late.
This is the control.
Can I redo it, Scott?
This is the control system for the irrigation pump. Oh, yeah, you guys voted. Thank you.
Yeah, first and second. Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And there we go. And this is the actual pumps with one of the storage reservoirs. All right.
I changed my vote.
Item number D, adopt resolution 2025, next number, a resolution accepting Newman Wetlands Project Grant Number Q1996046 is complete, authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of completion with Stanislaus County and authorizing the city manager to make final payment of retention funds to Rolfe Construction Incorporated 30 days after the notice of completion has been recorded.
All right, good evening again. I also have this item. We're completing some projects, which is pretty exciting. This one is the wonderful grant number Q1996046, but also known as Newman Wetlands Project. And this project enhanced and reestablished approximately 11 acres of emergent marshland, seasonal wetland and riparian habitat, and some native grassland, and then through water deliveries from the Miller Ditch. So, the construction phase started back in June of 2023, and if we look here, this is the diversion structure where the water from the Miller Ditch, which is the blue dotted line on the left of the screen, and so at the bottom of there, the south side of the property, that's Canal School Road to the left, and Brazos is about right here. And, yeah, I have a mouse. So that inlet structure from this picture is on the south side, and the idea is as the Miller Ditch fills with water, both seasonally and agricultural till water, it can be diverted into this swell, this wetland system, and it will just pool up in a natural way in a marshland. And so this property, this is a less complexity drawing of what that property is. For you who remember, the northwest of this property will be our news system, our Newman Environmental Wetland System, and then in this area down here, we'll have the nature park, and then eventual south, and then eventually down in the southwest, there'll be another kind of wetland system. That's in the plan for that property.
Thomas, before you move on, where does Enyo come in in Hit Canal on this map?
So Enyo is right at the top here.
Okay.
And so Enyo comes in, the city's storm lift station is on the opposite corner and the future site of the corp yard, Corporation Yard.
Thank you.
Yep. And it's recommended by staff that the city council adopt the resolution accepting this project as complete, and I can answer any questions.
When is an opening date for the public?
So, site access for the public is... site access for the public is, is still not, we don't have a date yet for that.
Okay.
The news project, the news project will, will probably facilitate a lot of the site access. The entry is, the entry to the, the overall property, the, initially will be through the news. And so we're still working on a few pieces, one of the diversion structure for that project, which will pull water from the north side down in, down into the marsh system. And so some of that work will be April. By the summer, we'll have likely a substantial completion. And so they'll be discussed with staff on public access to that part. Now, the, the wetland swell itself won't be, we won't walk through the wetland, for example. However, there will be access. There will be like a trail on the, around the basins of the news project that will allow, and a, and a observation point on the south side here, that will, then you can oversee the property. And then with eventual buildout of the nature park, we'll have the north and south side to kind of look at our grass. Right now, it doesn't look like much. It's, is grass and native out there? Well, it's a mixture of, of plants, both native and, and others. And so there was some planting. And then so once, as you can kind of see to the left of this pitcher, which is the north, northwest of, of the swell, there's observation point. Thank you, Mikey. And there are trees being planted. Those we expect over the next few years to grow out, the other plantings, along with plantings involved with the swell itself. And then, and it will, it'll just over time build out and will maintain it in different ways. The swell itself will be a lot less hands-on maintenance, as it's supposed to be more of a natural setting. Whereas nature park and the news system will be more hands-on maintenance.
Thank you.
Since I live close to this, I know that Canal School is a pretty high-traffic road, a lot, a lot of cars that go faster than they should. As we look at access for the public to this, I know that there's a parking area. It looks like they developed a smaller parking area. Is there ideas around modifying the way that they enter into that area? Because you're going to have cars stopped on a two-lane road wanting to turn into there potentially at some point, which could create a safety issue.
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll be looking into access to that property. Into, on the bridge, the bridge will be on the Canal School down Southmore versus that. The construction access now is on the corner.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Harden, just for the public, main access to the site will be off of Brazzo Road when we do the nature parks. And we're hoping to have that out to bid this fall. It's about to be a one-year construction on that. So main public access will come off of Brazzo Road. This is more for maintenance vehicles and people that are getting into news.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any questions from the public? All right, I'll bring you back to council for action.
Move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five, resolution accepting Newman Wetlands Project, grant number Q one ninety-nine sixty forty-six. That's complete. Authorizing the city clerk to record a notice of completion with Stanislaus County and authorizing the city manager to make final payment of retention funds to Rolfe Construction Incorporated thirty-five days after the notice of completion has been recorded.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
I'm number twelve. Item's from the city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just taking it back up here for a second. Will you go back to the? No, right there. So this is just kind of briefly for the public. So what you're seeing here, it's very rudimentary. But this is an eighty-acre site that the city has purchased. Up here in this top corner, kind of this triangle area here, we're doing some constructed wetlands and we're going to run our storm water through there and clean it up before we discharge it into the river. Kind of like I can clean up water before you discharge into the river, get all the hydrocarbons and everything and trash out of there. So again, it's a, it's a, it's a water quality issue that we're doing there to help purify the San Joaquin River. There'll also be some trail systems in here. As you can see here up on top, there's a observation deck that you'll get up above and you'll be able to see the whole eighty-acre site. Okay, go back one. Going back into here, what you're seeing here is this is eleven acres. We got a grant to restore this back to the time when, you know, the humans weren't really around as though it's upper in wetlands. Trying to restore it to its original intent. This was grazed for a lot of years. And this bottom part here is I'm going to outline it with this piece, kind of comes up here. That's going to be a nature park. It's going to have a playground. It's going to have ADA accessible trails. It's going to have a learning center. It's going to have a pollinator garden. And so anyway, this is a play for people. We anticipate people will go out and exercise. There'll be exercise stations in there. People can get out, hang out, take your kids out into nature and get off, you know, the city areas there and just, you know, interact with nature. And then the last, you, this bottom piece down here, it's about twelve acres. We're in partnership with UC Merced. They're going to build like an outdoor lavatory. It's a wetland system, but it'll be like an outdoor lavatory for environmental engineers to do graduate-level studies out there and study wetlands and environment biology and all the, and body and all the other things. So it's a really great project. If you guys have any more questions on that, please see me, so.
And clarify, a majority of this has been paid for by grants.
Correct. So far, we've, we are probably received about thirteen million dollars in grants to construct, to construct all this. We are in the, what's called the sixty to ninety percent stage for the nature park, meaning we, we believe that we'll have plans completed and ready to go out to bid this fall, early winter. And either, either break ground in the fall, winter, or early spring with about a one-year construction period over there. So hopefully by, what is that, it could be late twenty-six, early twenty-seven, we should have a park out there for, for our youth and our families to go out and enjoy and get out, get out in nature. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just bringing a couple of things up. Today, you guys did a couple events in our plaza, the downtown farmer market and the Tunnel to Towers Run. There was an ask of a waiver for to reduce the liability insurance from three million to one million. This will be the last year we ask you to do that. And that's really coming from our Risk Management Association. If we don't, if we don't require them to provide the proper insurance coverage, we may become liable as a city when it goes over. So we're going to start asking that these people start providing the correct amount of insurance on those. And that'll be across the city, so. I was recently informed, as you, as you may know, the federal government passed their continuing resolution, which is going to fund them through the rest of their fiscal year. Unfortunately for us, we had a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar community project that was anticipated to be funded this year. It did not get funded. So we are in conversations with our, our congressman's staff and they, they truly enjoy our project. So they're going to plan on carrying that forward and then provide us any information if they hear of any grants. We are also working with our grant writers to see if there's any state grant money that can come out and help clean up that site. As you know, I'm talking about the Foster Farms. The problem is, is there's lead paint and asbestos in there. So it takes a specialized firm to get rid of that and then they have to haul it off to a special site. So probably in the range of about six hundred to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get that site cleaned up, so. We're, again, we're still optimistic that that'll get done. We do have a planning commission meeting coming up on April seventeenth. A lot of items on there. So we're implementing the housing, housing element of the general plan, which was adopted at the end of last year. And the state's pretty on risk in keeping us doing a lot of things. So we'll get that. That'll go to the planning commission first and then it'll come to you in late May, early June for your final concurrence on that one. And then just lastly, I wanted to remind Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, we do have that district meeting on April, Monday, April seventh. With that, I can answer any questions the council may have.
Any question?
No.
Thank you, Michael. Ally?
Evening, Mayor, council members. Just to remind everybody that Kio will be holding a volleyball tournament along with us at Yolo April twenty-fifth. Anybody interested in participating, it is for eighteen and older. They can come visit me at the teen center or I can give you guys information to contact Kio. Also, we are rolling into our Fit Kid Day Camp where we start, you know, getting volunteers. I see a lot of young people out here who might be interested in volunteering, earning any extra hours that you guys may need. If you have any, you know, people, anybody that is interested in participating. I see a couple of people who have participated in the past. Feel free to reach me or see me at the teen center, two thirty to six PM, Monday through Friday. With that, I can answer any questions that y'all may have.
I just have one. On the Tunnel to Towers Run, jumping on with what Michael was bringing up, I wonder if there, if there's a way to do a kids' run with that. Shorter distance and just, you don't have to do the full thing because obviously they're kids. Or old people.
I could definitely investigate on that.
Just a thought. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sergeant Williams?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. The only thing that I have today is if you noticed some extra officers in town or anything on social media, because it was all over. That was the county integrated, integrated traffic enforcement team. Basically, that's just some extra traffic enforcement and education. It's built up from officers from all the agencies throughout Stanislaus County. And we bound from town to town within the county. We're doing it twice a month now. And today was Newman's lucky day. So I don't have the numbers yet. I'm still waiting on a couple of agencies, but otherwise it's pretty successful. It's from seven AM to noon, so. Other than that, happy to take any questions.
A lot of people appreciate it.
Yeah. I didn't see one car that was fast going in front of the schools this morning. They were, they were all mining the rules.
Yeah, that's the main focus in the morning time is drop off and then spread the love throughout town after that.
I, I will say that the great thing that I saw with the police officers this morning is I saw a lot of them having conversations along with, you know, yes, they, they had some people pull over, but a lot of it was also conversations. You could tell it wasn't just the writing a ticket. They're, they're educating. So I really liked seeing that part of it as well.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Currently, the city of Newman has an online web payment software, which is very popular. Over half our residents use it to pay the utility bills. We're going to be continuing, but we're going to be upgrading it. The new software will allow us to take not only payments for utility bills, but also for business licenses. And we're also hoping to be able to do permits, building permits. This will allow our businesses and our residents to be able to make payments twenty-four hours a day to take care of needs. The timeframe we're looking for is sometime around June or July. Once we get an exact date, we'll start sending out advertisements to the residents. Let them know that we'll be switching over to this new website. The new website's got a lot more features in it. You'll be able to see a little bit more descriptive image of your bill for those that do online only. And as well as water usage, it's a pretty neat system. Happy to answer any questions.
Have an option to go paperless?
Yes.
Henry Corrine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, with the new system, will they have to create a new account for the paying system and all of that?
Right, because our existing system has everybody's stuff in there and it's, believe me, I asked them because of, half of our residents are currently using it. They are not allowed to copy that over to the new system because there's credit card numbers and stuff in there. So it's a violation of the PCI security rules. So everybody will create a new account, but it'll have the same features where if you just want to do your quick payments by putting in your account number and I think it's your street address, or you can actually set up an account, login and password and to be able to access it every time. You'll also be able to do auto pay, which is one of the things we've had a lot of requests for. So you can set it up so that when the bill comes around, it'll send you a notice that this is your bill amount on this date you're going to be charged and then it'll automatically go through. So for those of us who have very busy lives and don't have time to be able to look at every single bill, it'll take care of it for you. Also, if there's any kind of issues, like if there, if you get a bill for some reason that's very large because you had a water leak, a busted line, you can set limits on it so that if your bill is over a certain dollar amount, it won't automatically charge you, but it'll send you a notification that your bill was over that amount and it'll ask you what you want to do. So it's got a lot of nice little features in it.
And Mayor, it's, there's still no surcharge. A lot of cities will charge a surcharge of whatever, fifty cents, dollar, whatever. City Newman does not do a surcharge for paying online.
As far as change management of the communication, are you guys going to put banners on the, the main page where they click the online link to go to to start educating people now? Or when would we expect that communication to start?
Right, so we want to do it as soon as possible to get it out as many times as possible. So we're looking at our website, also our utility bills. We do have some emails in our utility system so we can send notices to them. We want it to be very clear because we want to make sure everybody switches over because it actually reduces each month sixteen hundred payments that we have to process individually. Back years ago when I first started here, I mean, we were doing three thousand, thirty-two hundred payments every month. And now we're only having to process half that number. The great thing about that is we don't have to hire more people to be able to process them as the city grows, which allows us to keep our rates lower.
Thank you, Lou.
Welcome.
Thomas?
Make sure I don't breathe too loud in this one. So I talked to the project, the completed projects. Another one we're working on right now is the Urban Forest Management Plan. And that document will help us, help us with our urban forests in town. Along with that, there is a program called Treekeeper. And that's a database of all the trees in town. And heat maps, some other data allows for us to track maintenance, removals, replacements. Additionally, any of the trees that get planted out at the nature park news, wetland system will be added to that. So will allow us to track that better. And so the, the Urban Forest Management Plan itself, in conjunction with that Treekeeper software, and it's all part. And that was funded through a grant. And so that Urban Forest Management Plan is being, the final draft is, is due by, by mid-April for final review from city staff before we, we bring it to, to you. And I can answer any other questions.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Just a few things. Just want to remind everyone to check your smoke detectors. We didn't get to remind you before the time change. So get back home, replace those smoke detector batteries. If you need help, you can give us a call. We'll send someone out to try to help you guys for those really high ones. We did do a recruitment event for the Explorer Program. We had four new explorers. This is a great feeder program into our volunteer fire department. So when these kids turn eighteen and they graduate, they feed right into the firefighter position. So it's great. And then they're local, so their dedication and their participation tends to be at the peak level. So we're excited for that. We just finished up some interviews with them this evening, or this afternoon, really. Other than that, we're just working through some training. Expecting a fire season to be here soon. So we'll be ready to go for that. And then we actually had a couple of our firefighters get recognized by the board of supervisors. I think it was last week for their deployment to the LE fire. So I can also answer any other questions anyone might have. Thank you.
What time?
Seniors, thanks for being here tonight. I know you're here out of the goodness of your heart. It's not required by Mr. Barnes or Mr. Lavno. I like your floaties. I'm assuming that's a senior project thing? Okay, so Ms. Pembensel, Mrs. Pembensel says she really likes them and would like to know how she can get one. So that's all I have tonight.
Thanks. I didn't get an opportunity. Thank you, Michael, for your presentation today. My daughter does a similar thing with Mom Walk in Modesto and even the community within Moms there. You know, with adults, it's a great opportunity for them to reach out and have a, so I appreciate your efforts for all of this. I didn't get a chance to thank you, so I just wanted to reach out. Thank you.
Again, Michael, I appreciate you coming up today. Again, I, I love seeing the community here, especially the seniors. Thank you for, for coming tonight and being a part of it and for, for Lane, for you to come up and give us some more ideas. So again, excited to see what Michael and the rest of the community has in store for the future. I look forward to hearing what Ally might be able to do with the 5K run, maybe getting some more kids out there. So again, thank you for your time tonight.
Speaking on the floaties and goggles, I assume that probably has to do with senior. So with that, be careful out there, guys. I'm an officer too. We deal with a lot of accidents in Modesto because people are driving stupid, trying to get away from each other and just playing around stupid, right? Stay out people's front yards so you don't get surprised by a homeowner or something like that. So just be smart about it, all right? If you guys need signatures or anything, come up here, hit up any of the council members and that. With that, I have any more? Ask for adjournment?
Move we adjourn?